Good morning, everyone. We call this meeting in Door River. This is the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting. It's Tuesday, January 21st. Time is 9:01. Let's open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Comment that we were looking for additional board members for both the Fair Board and BZA Board. Both are on the agenda for today. And as a result of making that announcement in this meeting, we had about 14 people provide interest. For the BZA Board, and our attorney John Brooke can clarify a little bit better, but there's an Indiana code that precludes somebody from serving on the BZA Board if they serve on another board. So a few of the folks that reach out to us, once we vetted them, they serve on other boards. But we did have a couple that qualified. I spoke to a couple individuals. I believe Commissioner Henry spoke to a couple of individuals. And so we are to the point where we need to make a nomination of the folks we spoke for. I would also ask President Henry if somebody is here that is nominated, if they would like to speak and address the board that they'd be allowed to do so.
Okay, good.
And I think this individual needs to be a registered Democrat.
Yeah, that's correct. This is a Democrat. We had somebody previously on the board that was under a Democrat appointment that was not a Democrat.
So do we have nominations?
I would like to nominate Audie Barber.
The Barber. I live here in Muncie. I've been following politics for quite a while now. I've been a Democrat all my life. I'm a common sense type person. I don't believe in doing what somebody tells me to do just because they want it done. I make my own decisions. I'll take both sides into anything into consideration with this appointment and do what's right for the county. Because at this point, it's about the county. It's not about individuals and stuff. I think what's best for the county to move the county forward will help out. So I do not serve on any boards, nor have I served on any boards in the past. And it's a new venture. I'd like to get started.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so when, Edwin, you called the name. If the Commissioners would just state the last name of the individual who they would like to serve on the BZA.
Okay. Mr. Riggitt.
Barber.
Mr. Brand. Barber. Mr. Henry.
Barber.
Welcome.
Congratulations. I recommend you work with Kylene Swackhammer, get a hold of the Planning Commission Guide, and read through and understand the BCA requirements. Thank you. If you're an entity and to be on that board, then you would, or as a volunteer, then you would move on to that board later.
That's what they recommend. And like I tell them, the two weeks of the Fair, the 4-H Fair in the carnival is very intense. But it's the things that go on before that that we need people to be looking at to make some recommendations on how we can improve the Fair because they are always needing some monies to do the buildings, something. And cash is very short. So we need someone with a background of buildings and also some finance people.
It's a very active board, and people think about the Fair Board and you think about the two weeks of the Fair. But there's a lot that goes on out there at the fairgrounds. There's a lot that goes on. So those board members and volunteers are very active throughout the year.
Just like at home, there's always something that breaks. No money sometimes, so.
Okay, so we're good on Fair Board right now.
That's right.
The Central Indiana Regional Planning District Board. I believe there's, we have two members.
So you self, if you may.
So, so you'd like to make a motion to table the?
I'll make a motion to table the ECIRPD Board appointments for myself and sharing.
We have a motion to table those board appointments in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Riggitt.
Yes.
Mr. Brand.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. All right, next, we'll go to tabled business. We have the handbook revisions and that ordinance, which I would suggest we keep tabled, correct?
I am.
Yeah, we need to go ahead and table that. I've got, we have our first meeting is Thursday.
Good.
So we'll have something maybe to report back to you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the 911 Center Chair Lease. Mr. Cummings.
So after the last meeting, I did some further research. There were some meetings with a couple of vendors. I'm confident to say that this chair lease is a good deal, and I'm requesting that you approve it and sign it.
Yep, thank you. So I had asked you to reach out to some local firms, and you did that. You didn't get a favorable response or reaction from any of those folks, right? I also, I communicated with Andrew Dale, used to be in this business. And he looked it over, and he recommended, said that this was a good deal for.
Are special meeting minutes for September 30th?
I don't know. See them the other day. Weekend?
Yeah, she said.
Did you?
Yeah.
And I overlooked that. I didn't read them.
I'll make a motion to remove them from the table.
Second.
We have a motion on the table, or a motion on the second to remove from the table. Roll call, please.
Mr. Riggitt.
Yes.
Mr. Brand.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. I entertain a motion for approval. Directions and approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to approve the minutes in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Brand.
Yes.
Mr. Riggitt.
No.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Can I make a quick comment there?
Absolutely.
So I had Councilman Cantz and I met with a gentleman from the Google Business World. And what we were talking about was artificial intelligence tools that we can lay over some of the processes that we do throughout the county, specifically the meeting minutes. And I have already briefed Auditor Ed Carroll about this. There is a Google tool called Notebook LM, and you can basically take your agenda, as well as the video, right off of YouTube, pull it into this tool, and it will create meeting minutes based on the instructions that you give it. This will save the Auditor's Office a ton of time. There is a free utility tool online, but I recommend that we explore getting something a little more sophisticated. And you can literally generate the meeting minutes. It'll watch a video, even if it's an hour or two or three hours. It'll assess this video, and it'll take your agenda, dependent upon the instructions that you write. It'll generate the meeting minutes in about 10 seconds. So I look for big improvements and efficiencies throughout all of our government offices, starting.
Second.
Motion to remove it from the table. Roll call, please.
Mr. Riggitt.
Yes.
Mr. Brand.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Brand.
Yep. So just in the January 6th meeting, we provided an update. Since the Commissioners put a moratorium in place, that moratorium is in place until March 1st. That's a short amount of time between now and then to get too much work done, considering the process you have to go through if the zoning ordinance is going to be amended. We did receive an amended recommendation from a citizens group. And I wanted to clarify, that group was not put together by the Commissioners. They were self-motivated, self-funded, self-organized, and they took this upon themselves to make recommendations. And these are people directly impacted by the solar installations that are going in adjacent to their homes. In the meantime, we've received an update from Ms. Christina Blunt. She represents National Grid Renewables. They have also sent us their recommendations for amending the solar ordinance. So we're currently in the mode where we would have to take three versions. The current solar ordinance, the recommendations from the Rorten Group, and the National Grid Renewable Group, and compare and contrast those and come up with a recommendation. But the next step after that would be the Planning Commission would have to take action if we're going to amend the solar ordinance and make a recommendation. So if that's what the Commissioners end up deciding to do, I'll work with Kylene's office to compare those documents. Again, laying an AI tool over the top of those three documents. You can pull in those three documents into this document comparator tool and write some simple instructions, and it will give you all the differences. You can literally say, you know, what's the difference between a setback? What's the difference between, you know, glare? What's the difference with?
Yep. A motion to approve those minutes in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Riggitt.
Yes.
Mr. Brand.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Next, we have presentations to the Commissioners, BW Construction.
Morning. Thank you for having me. Mark Manship, I'm the Project Manager for BW Construction on the Delaware Health, Mental Health Facility. Just going to provide an update on the construction progress through December and partial of January, just to give you an idea where we're at. So we talked about contract status, construction progress, and the schedule summary. So the original contract was a GMP at $7,996,170. That has not changed. We haven't had any owner change orders, and we don't anticipate any of that at this time. So our connections and the water to the building, so that was in Ireland. So our curbs will complete as soon as weather block rates. The lift station grinder pit is installed for the sanitary high-pressure system. Parking lot was undercut and stabilized. We were hoping to get the binder in before winter came. Asphalt plant shut down before we'd get site conditions to put that binder down. So at BW's expense, we ended up undercutting and put in some heavy stone so that we can stabilize it throughout the winter and utilize it for staging, parking, and other conveying equipment. Detention pond has been seeded, and we did get grass termination before the snow came in. So we did get grass popping up on that, and we're keeping the contractors off, so it maintains some good condition. We also have a mock-up wall framed and sheeted so that we can see our insulation system before they get put onto the building and get some of that cooperation coordination figured out. Make sure that we hit our warranty periods for our exterior. So speaking of building exterior, exterior framing and sheeting, the first layer of the sheeting has been completed. Exterior insulation systems are in progress pending the mock-up review. Last page, as far as the schedule summary, project initiation was 6/3 of 24. Contractual duration is 271 days. Our projected completion date as in totally complete and all closeouts and everything done by 6/16 of 25. We're definitely going to hit that date. Overall project completion, May 30th, 2025. That's when we hope to hit our substantial completion. That date may be pushed back pending weather in January. We're kind of monitoring some of the conditions due to the low temperatures that stopped some of our liquid applied efforts. So we're monitoring that this month, and perhaps next month, we can discuss that. But as far as the owner turnover and completion date, we want to maintain that owner turnover as in May 30th and total closeout completion by that 6/16 date. So some of the milestone scheduled activities have been adjusted slightly just to show realistic exterior framing and sheeting, MAP roughed in, substantially dried in, interior buildout. Those were all dates that were just modified from last period. That's our update.
Yes, I've been out there a few times, and what are you going to do to protect all that wood on the roof from rotting until you put the shingles on?
So by specification, that wood can be exposed for several weeks into weather conditions. And our roofing material is scheduled as soon as that decking is put down and completed, then we'll have our roofing material on top of it. So it will be within specifications covered up.
I'll fix your roofing material.
The, there is a synthetic underlayment that goes on before our asphalt shingles. I couldn't speak on the third.
Could you restate the GMP amount?
Sure.
Slowly. Thank you. And how many square feet?
We're just under 13,000 square feet.
You mentioned change orders. You don't anticipate any change orders?
Not owner change orders.
Okay. And the paving, that'll, when the paving plans open, you'll come in and?
Yes, we are fully prepared. That was part of the stabilization effort so that as soon as those paving plans open, we get on EMB scheduled, and they are ready to put our binder course down.
So when you did the undercut and put that different stone size down, did you have to do any lime stabilization under that parking lot?
No, we didn't. The undercut took care of that. We had the option of either lime stabilization, cement stabilization, or undercutting stone. We undercut in stone. So it cut down eight inches, added number two stone, had a very heavy base, and then topped with 53s with some fines in it and compacted. So it is a very, very stable base. And should, once the paving is engaged, we'll have another six inches of stone on top of that before the binder course comes in. So we brought it back to our subgrade with this stone effort. It's acting like a heavy driveway.
So that was my concern too, setting over winter. But we discussed that on the call, and you guys are going to address that, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
Any, any current action that you need by the Commissioners? Are you waiting on us for anything?
Not presently, no.
And how are yourselves behaving? Everything's good?
Everyone's cooperating and treating each other with courtesy and respect, and we're trying to maintain that. Of course, that's one of my goals as a project manager, is to make sure that we have a successful project. But also, everybody review the structure.
When will they be out?
Friday. We were anticipating doing that today, but they've asked to reschedule due to the weather. So we'll have our structural engineer on site to review the installation of the beams and the trusses and the framing itself. We've already did an internal quality control review and identified some items that were immediately addressed.
What time is that Friday?
Friday, that will be, I believe it's 10:30 in the morning on Friday.
Okay, then let, let them know I'll come out after that. So I'll come out Friday afternoon.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. And the architectural team will be out there at the same time to review the mock-up, again, to look at the insulation system and the weather barrier, and to walk the site. I believe they're going to bring some interns also for an educational opportunity.
I knew they were. I just didn't want to interfere with all that. So I'll come out Friday afternoon.
Great. Thank you.
So please tell us early and often if we're, if you need us for something.
Okay. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Citizen has been since the inception of 2009. We're the only one in 16 regions that has not raised the rate, so it has stayed the same. So that is, the only reason it did go down was because of population decline. One of the other things, Commissioner Henry, you asked me to, to help new Commissioner Brand was, what is ECI doing and what do we have going on? I sent, I give each of you an update sheet in front of you. I'll kind of go down through that. Right now, we have six federal grants that are going on or in play. The first one is the EDA Resiliency Grant. That was given to us in 2021, $400,000. That was to help with the COVID effect and to go out into the region, not just to talk, but to put bodies there. We had a full-time six interns that we could place throughout the region in different departments, planning and zoning. We had them in mayor's offices. Anything that was needed to help recover in any area of the region in any of the four counties, we were used, we were allowed to use those interns. In 2024, we went through 15 interns. Since the inception, we've had 42 different interns. It's worked from Ball State, Ivy Tech, and believe it or not, Middle Tennessee State. So that project, that project is winding up. We finish that up at the end of this month. That, that'll come up, and then we'll do closeout on that grant. We are still, we have raised money through affiliate members and sponsorships. We are keeping the interns going, and I'll mention more of that as we go through, through some of these grants. The second one is the EDA Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. If you just keep updating that said document, that will get us more points as far as we apply for grants, federal grants going forward. The number, the third grant there is our newest one, Department of Transportation SS4A Grant. That was awarded in 7/1 of '24. That was a half a million dollars. That is for Safer Streets for All. It is trying to eliminate accidents to zero. That is the goal, and what it does is, we're in the planning stage of that grant right now. We'll go across all four counties. Matter of fact, we've joined forces with the MPO. In this region, Delaware County has the only MPO. The RPO Rural Planning Organization is now working with the Metropolitan Planning Organization and trying to combine our efforts to reduce costs and duplication of services. They have a lot of information that we can use, and we have a lot that they can use. We're trying to bridge that gap. We have worked on that one. We have the, the RFPs have went out. We have the consultants contract. They came in a little bit higher than what the first round was that went out because there's a lot more players in the game now. So we had to reduce, redo, excuse me, redo the budget and get it submitted to Department of Transportation for approval. It is on their desk. It was sent a week ago Friday. It is on their desk, waiting for their approval, and our project manager is, has reviewed it, and he's okay. It's went on to Washington DC. So we're waiting on that one to come back. USDA Best Grant 5. This one here is just finishing up. You see the end date on it at 6/12/25, but you see only a balance of 2K. This is one of the best grants that ECI has had. BEST stands for Business Entrepreneurial Services and Technical Assistance. We help every entrepreneur or business that's out there if they are struggling. We've been very successful. We have six grants, basically $550,000 we've been given over that six-year period. We can do their performance plan, their job plan. We can have counseling done, the Kaufman Series. Ball State works with us. Ted Baker is another one at the Innovation Connector along with Small Business Administration. We can help them look for funding. What this does is alleviates their need to go to Indianapolis or to Fort Wayne to sit down with the same exact people that can get the work done for them. Because they're usually, your local entrepreneurs and businesses are small. They're right here in the rural area. They don't have time to go to Fort Wayne and waste an hour and a half and back. Plus, they're doing something else and vice versa. We try to bring these services to the rural area. Matter of fact, we have done six different workshops to date in Delaware, Jay, and Blackford County. These, these workshops were 100% put on by this grant, and it goes out. Ted Baker does a great job. There's usually three different topics of getting started, your, your business plan or funding, and they, it's about an hour and a half long meeting. He's got a lot of things there here. He's helped other businesses, depending on what stage they're in, starting, needing help, needing to reorganize, suffering, and don't understand why, and getting a different set of eyes on it. So these have been good workshops. We've had great attendance. And USDA, as you can see by giving us six, is pretty happy with the results that we've had from them. The last one up here is the EPA Brownfield Grant. We were awarded that in 6/1 of '22. Now, this was a Delaware County-only grant. This was not a regional grant. We went after it. This EPA goes after specific deals, not regionally, specific counties and not regionally. This was the third one that Delaware County has hit. We've done 1.7 million to date with the EPA. This one was very unique. We formed an Environmental Justice Steering Committee that is made up of three neighborhoods, basically Industry, McKinley, and Whitley Neighborhoods. And this task force was, Steering Committee was tasked with going into the area and finding where the properties were that needed to be redeveloped, where the interest was on this redevelopment. And then they would bring those properties to the Steering Committee for approval to move forward, whether to spend our money or not, of that 500K. What we would do there was, you relieved Phase 1, Phase 2, to take away liability so that development can move forward. And in some instances, there's, we have found tanks and other things in the ground. We did not use this grant to remove those tanks. Let me make that clear. This grant was only given to us for Phase 1, Phase 2, and cleanup plans. But what we have done, being our third grant in, is if IDM has money in the POZI or the ALF Fund, they've been pulling these tanks for us for free. Once we have control of the property, we get it from the landowners through the conversations, through the eligibility requirements, and get it approved. That gives us access and gives us the opportunity to get on there, get it cleaned up, get it removed down, and then development can go on from there. We have completed, as of today, 20 Phase 1 reports, five Phase 2 reports, two asbestos assessment reports. There's been 22 permanent jobs that were leveraged and $280,000 in cleanup. The other side of this was, we were just in Indianapolis. We were just in Washington DC last year. Shannon Henry accompanied us. We did a visit at EPA while we were there. We were there for another reason, to see Senator Braun at the time, but we had asked to see EPA. We had went through everything that had been laid out. I'm happy that this Steering Committee, and I've informed them, have been asked to do a presentation at the 2025 National Brownfield Conference in Chicago in August. They want to see this and what that Steering Committee has done and what we have done inside the city of Muncie, try to grow and foster into some other areas. So I think this will be a real good program and a real good opportunity for Delaware County. The next one you see there is OAKRA OOR Grant. This one here is a Jay County program. We're handling for them, a member of the group. They were awarded $1 million for the owner occupied rehab during the help process when we had ARP dollars available. The Commissioners come and ask if we could help them run the ground game. Some of you might know Klein Peter and Associate, Mike Klein Peter, one of the best state grant writers there is. I have teamed up with him. He is handling the paperwork. We are handling the ground game in Jay County. When we put this out, and we were well into this, we have already received over 80 applications. The radon testing and the contractors have all been identified. We've had one round that has went in front of the Commissioners, went out for bidding. Our second round is going in front of them and now, and then we'll go out for bidding. And it gets kind of complicated when you think about it. The Commissioners put 25,000 limit per house. So if you did it out, that's only 40 houses. But not every house needs 25,000. Some may just need a furnace. Some may need a couple of windows. It may need just a roof. So it, as the money goes down, then we release more and more applications to make sure we don't make false promises to somebody. We can only go until the money runs out. At $1 million, we're done. But right now, the program's moving along good. This is the first and only time this has been done in the state of Indiana. Most of them are done on a spot basis at 350,000 to 400,000. This is the first time an entire county has been looked at. Jay County qualified, like I said, with the low to moderate income and with the ARP dollars used. They brought the 68 acres up there to improve housing, address childcare, and retail business. Next on the list, you'll see AmeriCorps Broadband. This is our second year with AmeriCorps. I don't know if you're aware of that. These are some very highly intelligent people, their fellows. They get additional training. Land of Lakes is involved and a few others. We have had one solely on broadband for the last two years. This started back with Next Level Connectivity, Next Level 4 Grants, Challenges, reaching out to providers, AT&amp;T, Comcast, Main Street, all of the local, the big and large. Autumn has been an asset to the region. And when I say that, not only has she kept up, and we reached out and got the Next Level Connected to those people that were outside of where anybody wanted to look because it's five miles down the road, and we still can't get service to them because it's too expensive. That's what that grant was for. Then Challenges to the Next Level 4 in the Bs where providers said, well, you've really got service at 253 or 5100. You do the challenge and find out they're nowhere close to that number. They're, they're not getting the speed they need to do multiple things at home or in their area. So she's been instrumental at that. The other part that she's really done great at is, and I didn't know we had such a need, was the literacy and the cybersecurity that went out. She's doing this in workplaces, doing it in libraries and in schools. This allows people that, you think that it's all in second nature. I'm 64. I didn't grow up on the computer, and you find out there's a lot more people out there that, no, they're, they're still with paper and pencil. They like to go to the bank. They want a local transaction. Things are, transactions are going down, and we're going to a digital world. So it is going through those classes, trying to teach them how to navigate, how to get through the computer system. Then cybersecurity, what you're doing, what emails not to open, what to look for, and what you should have on there. So that training is ongoing. We have her until August of 2025. That'll be gone. I mentioned earlier, it's on the next, and the RPO, MPO, and I won't put Kylene on the spot, but we have really started to collaborate with the MPO. This is something that the state, the governor, has wanted for years. There is 16 organizations like mine throughout the state. There is only seven, seven counties that are not in a region, and they will sooner or later be in a region. This eliminates dealing from 92 counties. You're dealing with 16 or 17 regions when funding comes out, where you can see where the needs are and where the money and the effort should be concentrated at. So hopefully, by the time I come to the end of my reign here, which is going to be in a couple of years, that Kylene and I have worked this out where the MPO and the RPO are working together. And this will benefit both sides. Rural areas, Blackford, Jay, and Grant, even with Marion going, don't, don't have the capacities in some areas that we have as far as keeping the plans going, keeping them up to date, GIS, keeping stuff here where newly elected officials go in and want to apply for this or that. They can call over and get that information and start it instead of having to recreate it. It's here. We've got it. We're all using it and sharing it. We're in a region together. The next thing on the list is CCMG Grant Assistance. That's the Community Crossing Matching Grant. This has been something I've been at for a while, 2016, matter of fact, when this came out. I'm also elected in a small town of Delville, have been for a couple of terms. We, we, we did a deal one time, and when we first elected into this, it was like $10,000 or $15,000 to get everything done. Well, that's, in a small town, you ain't got that to throw. Well, that's, in a small town, you ain't got that to throw away. Long story short, we came up with the templates and the deal to do this and we offer, ECI offers this service for about two thousand dollars a year. And that's doing everything. As you can see on the sheet, we go through the ITAP, the five-year maintenance plan, bids, bid completion, doc closing and assist them in every way, shape or form. These small towns just don't have the additional funds or money that they can do this or afford to pay for this. All we do is cover our costs. It's not a money-making deal to ECI. It's to help the small towns. I'm happy to say since twenty sixteen, you know, small towns are seventy-five, twenty-five. The other ones are fifty-fifty, but the small towns, we've been able to bring in five million ninety-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-two cents of additional road funding that went to these small towns that they would have never seen. And you'd think that everybody would know this program by now. Just last year, at the end of last year, I put three new towns on that have never, ever applied for community crossing grants since its existence. The money they have missed already because they're eligible at twenty-five, seventy-five. They could have been paving their streets, replacing curbs and gutters and sidewalks. They just didn't know and no one had reached out to them. Last but not least, I'd like to, the recap I've got at the bottom. We keep track of everything since two thousand and nine. Since two thousand and nine, the fourth county region has in dues, just as you're here today, yours, has put in just under one point two million dollars in dues to ECI, to fund ECI and what we do in ECI. If you combine the grants and the community crossing grants, we have been able to increase additional funding right now of just under fourteen million at thirteen million eight hundred and ninety-one dollars, three hundred and seventy-three. It's a great program. We're about a fourteen to one return. We don't have all the answers. What we do is try to get the elected officials to work together, collaborate. We meet four times a year. In those meetings, it's a pretty standard board meeting, but what's important is two things. One, the presentation and knowing what's going on, but the second is the after the meeting, meetings that take place because you'll have same people facing the same things that we're facing here in all three counties. And we'll have people there that can help them solve the problem as far as not only attorneys, but developers, architects, environmental firms. We have a lot of affiliate members. So that is all I have, but I would be more than happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thanks, Bill. I'll admit, I've learned a lot today. You should do this more often for us.
No problem. Be more than happy to.
I knew you were busy, but I had no idea this busy.
We've gotten better. We've increased the staff a little bit. You know, at one time, we did not increase the staff. When I took over in twenty sixteen, we pertained.
You didn't have the room.
We didn't have the room. We didn't have money. But with the grants that we've been able to deal, we do a lot. The reason, one of the main reasons I guess point out is we haven't raised our per capita fee like most to the sixty or seventy senses. On the backside of most of these grants is an administration fee. We are a non-for-profit. The money we make off of that goes right back out the door into the, into the community. I can't guarantee you a grant here that just went to this county or that county. It's spread over. Where's the need at right now and what do we need to do? That's where we use the money.
I won't name names, but I heard that there's some counties that just aren't joining like you.
They're not participating. Yes, there's some areas there. Me and Mr. Brand have had an email exchange and I'll be more than happy to sit down. There's elected officials, let me back up. When the resolutions first went down, a lot of the counties went, when it goes in, you can turn them over to the auditor and it can be collected in the taxes and taken out every year. Some commissioners didn't want to do that. They wanted control of it on a year-to-year basis. There's a reason why and I'll let you read between the lines to figure that out. I don't play those games. Once the election is over, D R and vice versa, it doesn't matter. My job as the director of the region is to work with all four counties, whoever the elected officials are, what their plans and visions are and how we can tailor it into the grants that we can get and work for them. As I said earlier, we don't lead the economic development. I tell everyone, we're the canvas. We do the infrastructure, the brownfield elimination. We try to give you a perfect place where you as elected officials can start dropping those businesses and things you need to develop in there, be it housing or whatever it is. That's our job, is to get that spot ready.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Thanks for the comprehensive overview, Bill. You mentioned four counties. Can you clarify which four counties we're talking about?
Yes, that's Grant, Delaware, Blackford and Jay County.
And cities that participate?
Cities, you've got Marion, city of Muncie, Jonesboro, Swayze, Bryant, Salamone, Pennville, I'm going to go back and forth. Blackford, as we said, has not participated in there. Gaston, Albany, Selma, Delville. I said Jonesboro, Gas City, Swayze, Sweetser. I mean, we have good participation. Right now, there's only one and it is, and we're working behind the scenes and have been with the Indiana Commissioners Council, a few of those, the president and a few others, and the foundations in Blackford. I don't want to step on any, and I don't want to create any more, everybody needs to, we want everybody at the table and it's a group. And we don't want, of course, I want you to be there because you want to be there and you want to move things forward.
So you're asking us today for thirty-three thousand five hundred and seventy dollars and ninety cents?
Correct. That is your current, that is your current population at the per thirty cent capita.
And is it fair to say that Delaware County, including Muncie and the towns, contributes the most?
Delaware County has been the sole provider. If this ever came down, Delaware County has carried this region year after year. It is because we're the biggest population. But understand, putting a region together was so that not everybody, I mean, Jay County's got twenty-one. You got twelve in Blackford and you go down, you know, forty-some or sixty-some in Grant. So this is the largest county, but then the services are spread all over. So Delaware County, the city of Muncie, yeah, you guys pick up the largest share of the dues that gets spread out throughout the whole region.
Yeah, a fourteen to one return's amazing and thirty-three thousand five seventy ninety for what we're getting doesn't seem like a lot of money to me. I would though ask, can this be billed monthly or do we have to pay it all on January thirty-first?
It has been done since the inception of yearly so that we can plan and go and enter into agreements. Because some of these agreements, I have to have match money and that match money has to be in the bank. I have to get a resolution done by the board and I have to prove that I have those funds available. I've never done it the way you said, not saying that it can't be. I have to go to the attorney and ask there and take it to the board.
I would like to at least know that answer. And then you heard earlier, board appointments for your organization and I'm currently vetting candidates. Can you tell me what type of skillset you need on your board when I'm considering candidates?
The board by bylaw is two-thirds of elected officials. You guys can appoint somebody that is not on there. For instance, one of your picks has been Kylene Swackhammer from the MPO. Very vital, important to that, being with the MPO and RPO coming together, but having that information, transportation plans and that. Tom Boardchers, a surveyor has been one. Anyone with experience in municipal government, because your small towns struggle. They don't have the money for the lawyers or the environmental and they're the ones that benefit from these meetings the most, learning how to get things done, listening, you know, going into a conversation and that. So anybody with municipal government experience that could guide, help a clerk, board members, street departments, any of that nature would be beneficial to any of those small communities.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Anything else?
I'd entertain a motion to pay the thirty-three thousand five seventy ninety. I think we could probably pull that out of edit somewhere. We could take it out of edit somewhere.
Oh, yeah.
You make that motion?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a second?
Yes, second.
Have a motion and a second. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Regan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
That's where we paid it last time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have a consulting service contract of Ms. Swackhammer.
Good morning, commissioners. Kylene Swackhammer, playing commission. So this contract is for one of our former employees, Cheryl McGarrett. She retired at the end of last year. December thirty-first was her last day in our office. This is just a, in case we need to have her come back and help us out with anything. We did the same contract with Hugh Smith, our previous principal planner. We don't have anything anticipated or scheduled, but this would be a as-needed basis. Sherry did mention that she would like maybe it changed from, at the bottom of page one, it says timesheets are submitted weekly. Sherry suggested maybe that be changed to submitted bi-weekly. After looking at that, we just kind of determined that we had done that in case. A consultant basis like this, they're not at our office regularly, so they may be there one day for the month. So I think that's why we originally just had it weekly, so that every time they were there, they basically turned in that timesheet. We also noticed that on page two, where it says the date, there's just an error. It says two zero five instead of twenty twenty-five. So just to note that.
I don't see any rates or dollars and cents on here. Is there a rate schedule attached to it?
Yeah, so it's thirty dollars per hour and then this does not come out of any salary line budget. This is completely paid out of our office's comp fund, so this is not any of the general fund from the county.
Commissioner Brand, it's, when the county has a turnover, a lot of times the staff that's left does the training. And this particular job is just so much dealing with the state and being there how many years was there?
Cheryl was there for thirty-five years. So this did come in handy with Hugh as well because he had been there over forty years. So this is kind of the first time our office is experiencing this turnaround of someone being in the position for so long. So that's why it did come in handy with Hugh. That's why we're just kind of getting pre-prepared to possibly need this with Cheryl.
Can you use this as a training opportunity for your staff?
We could, with Cheryl, she was retiring, so we knew ahead of time. Brandy and I kind of trained a lot with her on some of the things that we weren't as involved in to get ready for that. But it could be used as that if we did get a new employee opportunity.
Yeah, good opportunity.
I'd entertain a motion for approval with the corrections stated.
Second with the corrections.
I have a motion for approval and a second with the corrections stated. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Regan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Thank you.
Just for clarification, did you want the weekly changed to bi-weekly? And then obviously the twenty twenty-five correction, but did the?
You guys want a bi-weekly? I want whatever convenient for you, to be honest with you. So how do you want it?
We're okay with either. Like I said, we just had it weekly just because they may be there one day a week and they may not be there.
For a couple more weeks.
Yeah, yeah.
I think weekly is sufficient.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinances for first reading ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero one. Ordinance for a purpose of creating new fund for grant-funded Delaware County Mental Health Court Problem Solving Court Program. Who's here to speak about?
I am, Jane Miranda.
Okay.
Any corrections? This is a new initiative for a problem-solving court for Delaware County to join the three existing ones that we have. This is being started by Judge Maywar and he was unable to be here today. He's currently on the bench. This, we are in our planning stage of this court. We have submitted a letter to the Indiana Office of Court Services and we are currently working on developing our team, deciding what cases we're going to take. This grant that we were awarded of five thousand dollars is for training for team members for this year. And this is new, so we do not have a fund to put this money in.
Received the money yet or are you still on the planning stage?
No, so because we have submitted a letter to the state, we are able to get grant money for planning. So we have received the five thousand dollars. It's currently sitting in the auditor's office awaiting the fund.
So you would need the commissioners to suspend the rules so that that money can be put into the account so you can pay?
What had happened is we applied for it with our existing problem-solving court grants, not thinking that it needed to go into its own fund. And so then when we found out that, that's why I'm here today, yes.
And then sustaining this going forward, you'll go for a grant every year or you'll be coming to the county council asking them to fund this?
No, Community Corrections is not county funded at all. We are solely on grants. So we have grants that we apply for. These are small grants that we get for all the problem-solving courts. Family Recovery Court has them, Drug Court, Veterans Court. I know that it's been at least ten years that we have been receiving these grants. So this is something that we can apply for every year.
It's important for the public to know that this doesn't come out of county.
No, it does not.
I mostly adopt.
So we have a motion to introduce this ordinance. Do I hear a second?
Second, introduce.
We have a motion and a second. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Regan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Now, do you wish, you'd like the rules suspended so we can adopt this today so you can get the money in the account?
Yes, please.
We have a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
We have a second. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Brand, yes. Commissioner Regan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Need a motion to adopt?
So moved.
We have a motion for adoption and a second. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Brand, yes. Commissioner Regan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for working on this.
I'd send some documents over in reference to new ordinances.
Yes, I got those.
Got those, great.
All right, next we have a resolution for approval. It's resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero one. It's a resolution of Delaware County Board of Commissioners establishing responsibilities in areas of control for various departments, operations of the county. In this resolution, this is something we did last year, maybe the year before. In this resolution, Commissioner Henry will be in over the nine oh one center, emergency management, emergency medical service, GIS, health department, and East Central Indiana Regional Planning District and Economic Development. Commissioner Brand will be under human resources, county building maintenance, the highway department, planning and zoning and the building commissioner, information technology and the sheriff's department liaison. Commissioner Regan will be over the veterans affairs office, weights and measures, courts and court system, the Delaware County Fairgrounds and Fair Board and the commissioners' office staff.
I appreciate the willingness of the other two commissioners to put this in place. I believe it's important for people to have a dedicated go-to person. I had a staff meeting with the department heads last week and some feedback from that was exactly this. It helps us put goals together and we can measure the progress of those goals and then we can actually do performance reviews with people. And, you know, people deserve the feedback and they want to know that they're doing a good job. And people generally want to do a good job and they want to know where they can do better. And I believe this provides us the vehicle to do that. So I appreciate the willingness of the other two commissioners.
I'm not in favor of this. However, I'm willing to give it another try. Thank you.
And I was kind of concerned on how we kind of picked and choose what departments we were naming and not that these are the problem children, but we just started with this group.
You had mentioned that maybe we had omitted a couple of departments. Can you say which?
Not like the elected official auditor, you know, assessors.
I don't know what purview we have over them.
Well, we, I guess these are the ones that are appointed.
They report to the commissioners.
I think I did add the sheriff's department in there and I just think that because there's so much that happens with the sheriff's department and the jail, I felt like that we ought to have a clear communication person that the sheriff can go to and that was kind of, that was the only reason I put that on there. There's a lot that goes on there. They're a big department, busy department, and I felt like they should be added to.
And we've already put that into play with some of the maintenance issues going on out there, some vehicle programming that you'll be hearing about soon. So I think it's important that they have a liaison and the county council, they appoint liaisons to the commissioners and I think it's important for us to work with the other elected officials.
So I'd entertain a motion for the approval of this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
A motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero one and a second. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Regan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, under uh department heads and elected officials, we have an annual report. Swat camera.
Thank you. Hi, Leanne Swatkammer, Plaine Commission. So you did receive the report from the building commissioner. Um, this is submitted to the commissioners annually um and usually presented at the January meeting. And then I gave you an additional paper that I have um put together. Um, so in our building commissioner office, um, we did provide you with a three-year comparison of construction projects. Um, twenty twenty-four, we had a total number of two hundred and ninety-one projects. Um, they are um separated into category as far as what type of project they were. Total number of permits issued for twenty twenty-four was seven hundred and fifty-five. The total permit income was ninety-five thousand, six hundred, sixty-five dollars and forty-eight cents. Um, a reminder on that, in twenty twenty-one, there was an ordinance um enacted that let the building commissioner's office keep ten percent of the permit revenue and permit revenue only um in their unsafe housing account, in our unsafe housing account. So for twenty twenty-four, that's nine thousand, five hundred, sixty-six dollars, fifty-five cents that we keep in our unsafe housing account. Um, and then ninety percent is returned to county general. Ninety percent would be eighty-six thousand, ninety-eight dollars and ninety-three cents. Um, total number of registrations, twenty twenty-four was four hundred and sixty-one. So these are contractors that have to register to do work in Delaware County. Um, registration income um was a total of thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Our office does not keep any of that um income. So total income is one hundred, thirty-two thousand, five hundred, forty dollars and forty-eight cents on the building commissioner's side. Um, inspection report, in twenty twenty-four, we had seven hundred and sixty-six locations visited, one thousand, two hundred and twenty-six inspections performed, one hundred and five complaints investigated. And I keep saying we, um, but this is um Tom Fauch, Delaware County Building Commissioner and um secretary in our office that um does most of this work. Um, let's see, also have a perm, building permit summary as far as broken down by the month and the type of permit. Um, because there are building permits, electrical permits, HVAC, plumbing, certificate of occupancies and demo permits. Um, are there any questions on that portion? So the paper I just gave you also covers, did I miss anything? Um, the paper I gave you also goes over um the other parts of our office. We do have the MPO. Um, and just to kind of give you an idea of what we do annually, the MPO um does receive federal dollars annually. Um, their fiscal year is July through June. So we are already anticipating the twenty twenty-six fiscal year. Um, we have an estimated dollar amount of three million, five hundred thirteen, five hundred and seventy-three dollars coming for road projects. So this money is distributed to the LPAs, the local uh public agencies that apply for road projects through our office. Um, went down a little bit, twenty twenty-five, we had three million, eight hundred, forty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven. Um, also, we do receive funds through our Unified Planning Work Program. Twenty twenty-six funds um have already been established, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred, twenty-one dollars and eighty cents. This pot of money is where we get reimbursements for things in our office. Um, anyone working on transportation, we get an eighty percent reimbursement on their salary. We also get reimbursements for certain projects throughout the year um when aerials are taken, um road inventories are done, ADA plans are updated, um comp plans, um zoning ordinances, things like that can also be uh reimbursed. Um, SS four A grant, Bill did a great job of covering that for us and I had just listed that our office is working um as the facilitator for that grant. Um, and the final target date to be finished and for us to have that Regional Transportation Safety Action Plan is May of twenty twenty-six. Um, also provided you a summary about the land use side of our office. So land use and development, um, we have several committees that deal with that. We have our BZA board, our plan commission board, um, we have plat committee, subdivision committee, village review committee. Um, I listed the number of cases heard by each of those committees. Um, BZA heard seventy-two cases. Um, and then I did break it down between city and county. So uh BZA of those seventy-two, thirty were within the city, forty-two were within the county. Land commission heard twenty-four cases, fifteen within the city, nine within the county. Um, plat committee heard forty cases, seventeen within the city, twenty-three within the county. Subdivision committee, three cases, one within the city, two within the county. Uh, village review committee heard four cases, those are all within the city. Um, so that is a total number cases of a hundred and forty-three, sixty-seven within the city and seventy-six within the county. Um, and I did check my math there to make sure I wasn't flip-flopping. Um, BZA fees collected, there's a summary there, fourteen thousand dollars um for BZA applications, MPC and others um together thirteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, that is also money that is returned to county general. Um, just some other things, we already talked about it in my previous um ask here. Cheryl McGarick, our transportation planner, did retire after thirty-five years of employment. Um, we do have a new employee in our office um who started back in October of twenty twenty-four, Kayla Schaber, she's the new principal planner. Um, that position had sat open since January. We currently have two open positions now, um our transportation planner and then our community planner. And then if there's any other additional information you would like, please request it from me. Um, or if you have any questions.
How are you doing on your open positions? Are you getting some?
They are posted, um, I believe we've received two applications to date. I've conducted one interview. Um, the other application, we just got in the mail, so I just dropped it off at HR before the meeting.
Very good.
What are your challenges, Kylie? What what support do you need from the commissioners?
Um, I would say our main challenge is just staffing and and time. Um, honestly, we could work around the clock and and still not get everything done. And um, you know, that's even harder when you're short-staffed and we've been doing that for a very long time, um whether it be a director, a principal planner, a community planner, an environmental planner. Um, I mean, we've been doing that for the past two and a half years that I've been here. Um, so that that gap of positions staying open is hard. Um, and then just training um and qualifications is difficult too. Um, there's opportunities for trainings, um, they're they're very general. Um, so I've kind of asked, um, Kyle Johnson is working with me on this too, to kind of reach out and get maybe some more technical, specific training scheduled where they come in and do those for our entire office. So I I would just say keeping up time, time-wise. We have one planner, you know, that that reviews development plans for the entire county and city. And that's not just, you get a nice, pretty um site plan. That's from, the people are wanting to buy the property, what can we do here? What can we, what do we need to, we're ready to go and apply for permits? So that's a long process and one person, you know, oversees all that, so.
Do you have any space for some part-time people just to help you get caught up or?
Um, I think that's, it's it's kind of hard to find that. Um, and I I don't know how, how qualified and how easy it would be to get someone to train for for that. Um, we don't have a part-time line anymore because, thank goodness, we got our secretary to full-time this year.
Did interns, have you used interns?
Yeah, we have used interns. We we had two this past summer. Um, and then ECI has provided us with two um for these two, fall semester and spring semester.
I'd like to ask Mr. Fauch a couple of questions if you don't have any question. I haven't kind of, thank you. Mr. Fauch, could you? Morning.
Good morning.
How many uh houses do we have that need uh torn down right now?
Currently, I have probably between twenty and twenty-five on my list. If I were to expand that list at this point for basically no reason because we don't have funding for it, we would probably be upwards of fifty homes at the least and up in Delaware County.
And then you had uh made a comment via email about funding. Uh, and we didn't, I don't know that we totally resolved that. How much funding are you looking for or what would it take to tear down these twenty to twenty-five or the up to fifty?
That's a really, that's a really good question. I mean, you know, each one's based, I take three bids on each project, at the least three bids.
What what we, what did we tear down last year with the twenty thousand dollars?
I'm sorry?
What did we tear down last year with the twenty thousand dollars? How many structures?
Well, last year, you guys, actually, the last year, I think you guys gave us fifty thousand.
Fifty?
Yeah, I think we were, we only got like four houses tore down. We're currently, I've got two in the process right now that are being tore down. Um, I've got one commercial structure that we're still, that basically the lowest bid on that was like forty-nine thousand. Uh, that one's sitting because I, I mean, that would eat up everything. So it's it's really kind of a pick and choose. Um, we do have some problem areas in Delaware County that we're really trying, I'm trying my best to clean those areas up and hopefully the neighbors are going to say we better get on the ball uh in those areas. Um, it it would be nice, even with the limited funds, to be able to to pick and choose more as to if we tear down in this area, we can somehow figure out to rebuild in that area that would benefit the community um uh with the money invested to put back into an area like that.
You prioritize based on safety.
Uh, right now, I do, right now, everything is, it's somewhat yes and somewhat no. Uh, I work very closely with the health department. And um, you know, so if they, if they deem a structure that uh for health reasons, um, if they get to a place where they they tag something in the health reason-wise, I can follow up with them and piggyback on them with un, with an unsafe. So we're, you know, we work pretty close together on a lot of things. Um, to, I would say most of the ones, yes. Um, we've got some others that have been just huge. Uh, some of the houses we've, with the the research that we do before we do anything, we've found have been like drug houses and things like that. So, you know, we tried to get those out of the way so hopefully we can start eliminating some of those problems too.
Gotcha. Where's our funding come from for this?
Uh, we pledged some out of edit last year.
There was some on the ARC.
Was there ARC too?
Yeah.
So I think, I think it's something that we need to, we need to.
Yeah.
Really increase our contribution.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Did they get thirteen hundred East May torn down?
Thirteen, uh, you know, the only thing that I did for you guys, Commissioner, was you guys came to me and asked me if I would take bids for that. That's not in my jurisdiction, so I turned that over to you guys. I do not know if that's been done.
Yeah, thanks.
I I appreciate all your work and I know um this is, I've I've been here for ten years and and Tom taking that initiative to take on these um.
How long you've been with us now?
Six years.
Is, I I greatly appreciate that.
Yeah, he's a, he's a hard worker and and very thorough.
I know it's increased your workload, but we appreciate it. I just want you to know that. I want to find additional funds to try to get.
I agree.
Make some meaningful progress this year.
We really need to be looking at our seventh plan in our edit because we've got some extra money in there that.
We're working on a few other things too that I really, you know, I can talk to you guys about later on. Uh, when I know that it looks like we're going to be able to proceed in those things before I say this is what we're doing, you know, and and things like that to try to help this situation out too, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom generally has unsafe building authority meetings once a quarter at least, depending on the needs.
Actually, yeah, actually, we, I've already set them up with uh Sarah. Uh, we're going to start back up with our unsafe housing meetings uh during, after your second meeting of the month, we're going to start back up in March. And so we've got it all, so it'll be every month thereafter in March. And that way, if if I don't need the meeting, then I'll just call her instead of trying to set it up month after month. If if I don't need the meeting or I don't need to waste your time, I'll just call Sarah and we'll cancel the meeting, she'll let you know.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, thank you. Um, do we have uh weights and measures? Everyone see their weights and measures report?
Do you have any other department heads or elected officials?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm getting in our ear.
I'm a Cameron, Human Resource Director. I just wanted to fill the commissioner's day in the public again. Uh, Commissioner Brandon and I, we met with IU Health Clinic on Friday and I thought it was a very good meeting. Um, to address the elephant in the room, they are not closing. That was the first thing we asked them because rumors have been out that the clinic's going to close next December. That's not true, they've never heard of it. So I think we're safe there. We met um with, we get a lot of complaints in the office about the clinic since they've gone bigger. And so we addressed those complaints and they were, they want to help us. Uh, they are going to hire another doctor in April or May along with Dr. Hovin. He's not leaving. And a couple nurse practitioners are coming in. So they understand our complaints as far as the wait time. I just want people to know, uh, my employees, that we are addressing their complaints. I mean, it's just, it's just hard because they really didn't think it would go be this successful. Um, but in the meantime, what I've done is uh we have changed our, all of our DOTs, everything the DOT does as far as new hires, drug tests, recs, anything like that are going, is going through CoverTech now. And uh they have been doing, in our physicals, we were doing physicals at the clinic, now we're doing physicals at um CoverTech. And then our uh workers' comp is going through Concentra. We're still going to use the clinic as a backup, but Concentra is where we're going to be sending our injuries, anything workers' comp. We can't have people going in there and waiting for four and five hours and not on the job. So this is the way we nipped it in the bud now. And if it turns out, our options are there, we can always go back to the clinic, but we just need to get, have shorter wait times, they need to answer the phone. They, and they're covered up out there. I mean, we've seen that, they're covered up. So I'm hoping this will help for now. And that's, um, Stephen, do you have any other?
We're also moving our drug screens.
That has not been decided yet. I haven't talked to you guys about that yet. We're wanting to move our drugs uh screens to either Concentra or to CoverTech. Uh, but we need to, I need to compare the prices. I've got two costs, but I I need a third.
And and just the price for the drug screen shouldn't be the only thing we consider when we're making that decision. The wait time, so if somebody, you know, has an accident and they're, uh, you know, the IU clinic is closed on Saturday evening and we have to have somebody sit and wait for two or three days and they're on paid leave, that can cost a lot of money. So I strongly encourage us to move to CoverTech. They will send people out to the job site right away and take care of those things on the spot.
That's for all your DOTs.
And and for post-accident drug screens.
Now, I wasn't under that understanding, but we can clear that up.
Yeah, yeah. My experience with CoverTech is that they they do that and will do that.
Okay.
And then it doesn't give somebody three days to study for the test.
Right, yeah, right. So anyway, I thought our meeting was very good and um and they're willing to work with us.
Yeah.
They're willing to work with us.
We also asked them to provide a list of services that are covered under our contract where, uh, our employees may be going to their, uh, family provider and getting those same services provided. So we're paying their family doctor when it could be covered for free. And, but they don't go to the clinic because of the wait times. So we have to remove the obstacle of wait times and then provide our employees with lists of services that are done for free. Uh, not free, but under our umbrella. We don't pay extra for it and get people to go there.
I think we'd be surprised if we looked at all the people that has gone to the clinic instead of their family provider. Um, but we, we need to keep them here. We need to keep them at the clinic. And by doing that, we've got to get them shorter wait times.
And the purpose of our healthcare plan should be to help the employees get healthier. That's the primary number one and reduce our costs.
Right.
And I'm not so certain that they were focused on that prior to our meeting.
Right. So, but anyway, it was a good meeting and I appreciate you going with me. Uh, so we'll go from here and see how that works. That's good. Okay.
Let's, let's, uh, let's get the drug testing thing figured out.
It's, it's a phone call.
It is, but if there is a, if there's a better solution, I would rather go to the better solution than.
We're not worried about that, okay?
Stick with clinic, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Hey, Mr., uh,
Mr. Tommy? Tommy Hemm from the Highway Department. Uh, first of all, uh, the CoverTech, I want to comment on that. For our department, that is absolutely the way to go. We've dealt with both and with our drivers and stuff and getting back to the job site. Absolutely CoverTech is, they blow everybody out of the ladder, so. That's all I want to say about that. So I got a bunch of notes. I don't know if I'll be able to read them. So if you hear a lot of ums, you can shut me off, Shannon.
Okay.
Okay, so, so this past year, I want to give you a little bit of a heads up on our, our paving and chip and seal slash maintenance. Um, just so people know, there's difference in lane miles and road miles. Um, so we have like seven hundred and eighty-five road miles, which converts to fifteen hundred and seventy lane miles. So people get confused on that, but that's exactly what it is. So this past year on, on chip and seal, we did ninety-eight point two-nine lane miles of chip and seal maintenance. And we did sixty point four-four lane miles of paving. For a total of a hundred and fifty-eight point seven-four lane miles or seventy-nine point three-seven miles. Now, we have, with the seven hundred and eighty-five miles we have in our county, we got a little under ten percent of our roads were affected by what we done this year. Okay? Um, you guys got any questions on that part right there?
Can you explain the difference between paving and that thin hot overlay process that, that we're doing?
Well, so, so the paving we're doing now is, and Troy can, can let you know this, we're, we're putting stuff down that's two inches. Um, it may roll down to an inch and three quarters or an inch and a half. Now, we do go in and put some overlays and build up some roads that sometimes we'll do that before we chip, chip and seal or maintenance on. But most of our stuff is two inches is what we put in. Yeah. Most of all, our paving is two inches.
Okay, thank you.
And, yeah, and on the chip and seal, I, I've, I've said this like tons and I address everybody with this. Without maintenance, chip and seal and maintenance is exactly the same thing. Maintenance is what it sounds like. It's maintaining a road until we can get back around to get to it to pave it again. You see a lot of, a lot done in NDOT. NDOT's doing a lot of it on highways, so. You know, the chip and seal, everybody does, a lot of people doesn't like it. They don't like it, but it has to be a necessity for us to.
Just the price of it is so, so much cheaper and it gets, like I said, it gets us through a couple of years until we can get to, get that road a couple of years. Keep the potholes out of it. It's not a four-lane highway. It's not an asphalt road. But it shouldn't be no potholes in that road for three or four years until we can get back to it. And that's what we're looking for, basically. When we do these roads, I'm looking to go in, level them up, get them hiked. Uh, once we pave, except for the majors or repairs, the majority of the traffic, we're still going to try to build asphalt. But there's going to be a lot more chip and seal applied to our county roads just to keep the, you know, the potholes out of them and keep our traffic moving in a right direction. I think we're moving in the right direction as far as our roads go. And I'm very happy with what we got accomplished the last couple of years.
You know, if we had unlimited funds where we could pave everything, yeah, we can look good. Because we have the manpower, we have the knowledge. I, I'll put our paver, pavers, the guy on the paver, I'll put every, against anybody in the, in state of Indiana. I mean, we have contractors compliment us, so we, we've got a good plan going, you know? It's just lack of money is what really cuts us sometimes, you know? But the, the tiffs do help, you know, when we get in with the tiff, the tiff does help where we can get some more miles done.
And Stephen, I think you was asking about milling. Uh, we're to the point on some of our roads, our height elevation on these roads, they, we can't put any more asphalt on them. So like, like Willing and, uh, Boyd Avenue, for example, which we've done, we're going to have to mill those roads out from now on because of our elevation just to get the people in and out of the driveways, businesses in and out of their approaches, all that. So, yeah, we, we're going to have to look at that cost too coming up.
In the future.
In the future.
So that's probably something, Angie, that we should put out for bids so we, I mean, we don't have a milling machine, right?
Correct.
So we should probably put out for bid milling cost.
The, the one problem we will run into when we start doing a lot of milling, it will be a decrease in paving. Because, you know, it's going to be hard for the public to understand that, you know? Our bases are good underneath, but that, like Troy said, we're getting up too high, too tall. So we're going to have to start getting stuff drilled back down.
And birmingham, are we doing more birmingham?
Yeah, we've done way more birmingham in the last three years than we have. And to be honest with you, me and Troy was doing some birmingham out here on the snow, you know? We was knocking some of the edges back and everything. But, yeah, our birmingham, our birmingham is better than it has been. You know, the one thing that's overlooked at Delaware County Highway is the drainage, okay? Everybody's worried about the roads. Without the drainage, we don't have any roads.
Right.
I mean, we're, we're top of the food chain, you know, the, the highway department, we're top of the food chain there about, so. We're good on that too, um. We can talk a little bit about how we pick our roads, okay? There's a phaser system and Troy can kind of explain a little about, a little how that's.
It's a road rating system. I think ours is set up zero to a hundred, but it's, I think they're going to zero to ten. With zero being, being the best and ten being the worst. Or ten being the worst, or the best and zero being the worst.
I think we just did that. Did we do that last year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We had a contractor training map. It does light our, on all our streets.
But, but with the weather, so today we got zero, tomorrow tonight we got minus six, end of the week where I have almost forty. The freezing, the thaw, that's what kills us. That kills us, so.
It's going to pop the roads up, you know?
Yeah, we're, what's what we're worried about.
So, so with the scale, it's, it's a good determination on what needs paved. But what it does not take into, to terms is the traffic count, the traffic volume. Okay, so if I say, Tommy, I'm going to go get these bottom three roads, bottom five roads in our county and do them. It's probably going to be a small road with twenty cars on it, you know? We, we try to work the lower roads in, but we also, one of our big, big factors is traffic volume. And we try to tie everything in, like Eaton Willing Pike, Eaton Albany Pike. We try to keep them paved together where we do them in pieces and they're all similar in age. Um, we start there. We start on our main roads. We make sure they're fine. Then we go to the secondary, but we always try to work a couple of roads in a year that actually are low, low, but low traffic also. And, and like I said, in a perfect world, you think, well, we're going to start the bottom. We're going to do all the bottom roads. Well, you're, you're going to ignore the good roads, the Willings for a long time. We're going to lose those roads. That makes sense, huh?
Yep. Do we have, still have gravel roads that are school bus routes in the county?
We still have how many roads?
I think we got ten miles of gravel.
But we, we have been picking some of those up and chipping them.
We've paved, uh.
And paved them.
I think, I know we've paved two in the last couple of years to get them off the list.
And you're grading, I'm bringing them back into the middle and. Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Is there anything else you guys have any questions on?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Hey, I, I want to say, I want to thank the guys at the Highway Department on this last snow. The guys and the gals at the Highway Department were wonderful. You know, it seemed like three or four inches of snow was like a disaster. Well, it was because the kid blew them back. So, I mean, we hit it pretty hard. We had everybody, we sent everybody out, pickup trucks. So many people, so many grateful people, people called and, and thanked us and I really appreciate that. Um, we went ahead and hit the additions. We hit them with everything, but like I said, the wind, we was up against a battle with the wind. But UPS called. They could not get through into Henry County. They could not get into Randolph County. And they appreciated it. So I want to thank all the guys. They put in probably forty, thirty, forty-seven plus hours uh, of overtime. Pretty much everybody out there did to get us through this, so. Like I said, it's not been like this for a while. This doesn't happen all the time, but this was one where the wind really kicked our butts, so.
We appreciate you guys.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other department heads or elected officials? Mr. Slusher?
Sorry, boss, I had to come up from the booth. Our, uh, audio system that we use has kind of been on a decline. It's kind of reached the end of life as far as the equipment. I did have a company come in and quote it and they even looked at repairing it, but, uh, the units that we use are no longer manufactured or parts manufactured for it. So the commissioner and I gave a copy to John and to Sarah. There's a quote there for wireless and wired. Um, I'd recommend the wired, not just because of the cost, but the wireless introduces some possible problems with that. But it'd be a similar system to what we have now, but it'd be one more microphone. So we can, you know, either use on the other podium or, or whatever like that. I didn't get the quote in time for them to get on the agenda, but I just wanted to share that with you, so. Um, it was a pretty good quote. One company that you have in front of you, they do, uh, work for National Park and everything and they, they are local. They're over on Martin Luther King. And, uh, like I said, they looked at trying to fix these and you can't even buy the parts for them. They're, I think this stuff's maybe twenty-five years old, I think someone said, so. Um, just wanted to put a bug in here. The video part of it's working good. Jim and the guys in IT have a rock solid, uh, connection for us here. Sometimes it glitches, but it's, it's always been Comcast. You know, nothing on our end, so I appreciate Jim and the work they've done to make everything stable, but I just wanted to tell you a little bit of information on the quote that you have there to answer any questions.
On the microphones, I think one of the issues is, you know, with these microphones, they're just open all the time. Where you can push, you have to push the button and keep the button depressed in order to mute the microphone. So on these new microphones, is it actually a push button where you can push it and leave it on all the time? Push it and take it off?
Oh, it's a mute. I'll have to ask them about that.
So I, I think that's important and, and, um, I, I know, uh, with some of the people typing, we have to.
Right.
Turn their microphones off, so.
Right.
Um, I mean, I, I don't, I think this is a great price for, uh, to, to replace these is, um, thirty-seven hundred and eleven dollars. That's, that's a good price for this, but I just want to make sure we get the appropriate microphones.
I'll ask them about that. And the quote also includes a, uh, speaker for the hallway. Um, for overflow. We have people out there. You can't use the audio on the TV because that video signals went through the computer, so it delays it.
Yeah.
So if you turn it up a little bit, it's delayed out there and it causes a loop, so we'd get rid of that problem. And we do have a lot of people that need to sit out there, but I can check with them on the constant on. So you're wanting something where they can mute until they talk and then unmute it?
Yes.
Okay.
If you can have them send you a cut sheet, that'll help us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I can do that. I just wanted to tell you about it. Thank you.
Nice work.
Thanks for doing that. Um, let, let's, uh, I had to entertain a motion to table this. I want it on the second. I have a motion to table the, uh, quotes for the, um, audio equipment in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Brand?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
All right, no other department heads or elected officials? Um, we'll go back to the weights and measures report. Everybody take a look at that. You have any questions?
I do not this time.
All right, we have, we have the payment of claims of three million, five hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and six dollars and twelve cents.
Make a second and if I can make a couple of comments.
All right, go ahead.
So in the last meeting, I made a comment about there weren't any descriptions in the claims and I see some major improvement there. So thank you to all of those entering the descriptions in the claims. I would say that probably fifty percent of the claims have a comment now. Uh, we also talked in the last meeting about posting our claims online. Those are all online now from January sixth. Uh, however, they are largely absent of the description, so it's going to be hard to understand exactly what the service was for, but you'll see the dollar amounts. Um, I would request that anybody entering, uh, in VIP, you're the one that needs to put the description in there. So anybody that's entering in VIP, you're the one that needs to put the description in there. And then I would ask, um, I don't know who our VIP super user is, but I would ask if we could provide some training on VIP to, uh, the folks that are, that are entering these things. I think that would help a lot. So in the spirit of time, I'm not going to go through these claims. They're going to be online. You can look at them yourself and please come to the next meeting with questions.
So we have a motion and a second to pay the claims. Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Regan?
Yes.
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes. Next, we have a payment of payroll for one, two of twenty twenty-five in the amount of one million, sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Second.
We have a motion to pay the payroll for one, two of twenty-five and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Regan?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes, we have a, uh, payment of payroll for one fifteen of twenty twenty-five in the amount of one million, one hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars and thirty-five cents.
Second.
A motion to pay that payroll and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Regan?
Yes.
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes. Next, uh, we'll go to, um, public comments. We have Linda Hanson.
Linda Hanson is, uh, obliged to go to another meeting and ask me to stand in for her and read her prepared statement.
Could you state your name, sir, address for the record?
Yeah, my name is Robert Kester. I live at twenty-seven oh nine West Burnell Drive. I've been there for some forty years. So this is what Dr. Hanson has prepared. I'm just going to read it. Um, good morning, I'm Linda Hanson. A spokesperson for the League of Women Voters of Muncie, Delaware County. The concerns I raise today have implications for all residents of Delaware County. The League of Women Voters supports and promotes an open governmental system that is representative, accountable and responsive. Citizens have the right to know what their elected representatives are doing. Transparency is crucial to facilitate the public's informed understanding and public participation in government decision-making. The current solar ordinance currently under moratorium was crafted transparently. Yes, the process was cumbersome, but we didn't cut corners. Proponents, opponents and neutral parties all had their say in two officially appointed study committees. It followed the procedures of the Delaware County Commissioners and the Delaware Muncie Metropolitan Planning Commission. Our previous moratorium was imposed for specific purposes to allow for further study and recommendations for amendment. That process played out with opportunity for public input. The current moratorium had no specific rationale nor purpose identified. It seems simply to have been employed as a tool to stop renewable energy development. The Center for Infrastructure and Economic Development offers some guidelines for using a moratorium, noting first that it should be an action of last resort because all development moratoriums send confusing and adverse signals to farmers, landowners, project developers and the public. Having a regular schedule for reviewing and updating local zoning ordinance allows for development to continue and the community to feel confident that the elected officials are continuously maintaining sound policies that support the evolving needs and goals of the community. Essential guiding questions for imposing a moratorium are three. What is the reason for the moratorium? What is needed to resolve the issues causing the moratorium? What is needed to resolve the issues causing the moratorium? And how long will the moratorium be in effect? The current moratorium included only an end date. The document Commissioner Brand presented at the last commissioners' meeting purports to resolve an issue, yet the issue is unstated, as is the reason for the moratorium, also unstated. Further, it is addressed by an unofficial group.
That's three minutes, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next, we have Jonathan Monroe. Did I say that right?
That's right, that's right. Yes, good morning, commissioners.
You have three minutes, sir, I should have reminded.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. I'm Dr. Jonathan Monroe. I'm a cardiothoracic anesthesiologist down the road and I have the privilege of taking care of your constituents. They're great patients. They're wonderful patients. I speak on my behalf and not on behalf of my employer. I really speak on the patient's behalf because they all have the right to good air. And so I'm going to ask today that you let renewable energy go ahead in Delaware County. We don't tend to think much about air pollution, but it's the single greatest environmental health risk factor in the USA. It's responsible for a hundred thousand deaths annually in the US. That's excess deaths, okay? So premature deaths. That's more than gun violence and motor vehicle accidents combined. People tend to associate it with lung disease, but actually the fine particulate emissions and ozone cause at least as much ischemic heart disease, that's heart attacks and strokes, as it do lung disease per se. Asthma, meanwhile, kill young patients and mercury emissions from power plants are actually potent neurotoxins which affect children. Now, look, humans have always burned things because we haven't had a choice up until now. But now we have a choice and we're going through a similar paradigm shift that we had with our water. Like imagine if you found out that someone died in your county because there was cross contamination between wastewater and drinking water. We'd be outraged. Rightfully, we spend a lot of money as a society protecting drinking water from wastewater. We're going through a similar paradigm shift with the air we breathe. Now we have a choice. We don't have to pollute into the very air we breathe. And commissioners have a choice to double down on deadly emissions or to go to clean energy. Any, so demands for energy are going to increase in Delaware County. Any energy not produced cleanly here is produced by dirty means in neighboring counties, neighboring states. The pollution finds its way into the bloodstream and the lungs of your patients. They find their way to operating rooms with preventable diseases. The stakes are really high, okay? So I'm asking you, please, keep the ordinance. Just let things move ahead expeditiously so we can give your residents as clean an air as possible. Thank you so much. I will also submit some scientific literature in support of my claims this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Christina Hartzell. Is it Christian?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. My name's Christian Hartzell. I live in Albany at five four nine West First Street and I'm here with Renewable Ready Delaware County. We all need clean, reliable and local energy. A strong community is a resilient county. Renewable energy is efficient and independent. It creates jobs, strengthens the local economy and modernizes our electric grid. We should welcome technology to our community that protects our future. Renewable technology preserves our air, water and soil. Every search assertion you hear about the dangers of renewable energy is covering up for destruction that is already taking place by burning fossil fuels. We can't continue to fight against renewable energy because it makes us uncomfortable or we don't like how it looks. If we continue to delay companies investing in our energy grid, we will miss important opportunities for growth and abundance. We already have a well-written solar ordinance that was put together by some of Delaware County's most knowledgeable and brightest public servants. It's not ethical to have a company, an opposition group, submit suggested amendments to the ordinance. The committee was already put together to create an ordinance that was transparent, balanced, fair and ethical. We don't need to compromise on different versions of the ordinance. We need to move forward with the current ordinance that was already put together by committee. We spent countless years debating in public spaces of our county on the costs and benefits of renewable energy. We need to move forward and let the process take place and take its course. If a company proposes a bad plan for our community, we can say, no, thank you. I believe in our democratic institutions and of our appointed, elected and willing servants that participate in them. Please don't let our processes continue to be dragged on towards exhaustion and become so restrictive that companies can't possibly meet them. I thought Delaware County was open for business, not close to the technologies that we need to help improve our quality of life. Please revisit your thoughts on this and please don't continue to delay the process that is already completed. Let companies submit their proposals and their permits and trust that the process will play out and do what's right for Delaware County. Simply put, stop the moratorium, keep the ordinance, trust the process. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Jackson Franklin?
Hello, I'm Jackson Franklin, eight oh three West Ashland Avenue. I just wanted to talk about the financial benefits of the farmers that want to choose to utilize solar energy on their properties. So in many cases, farmers can make more money from solar panels than crops and the income is more stable than the income from crops. Diversifying their income stream will help some farm families stay on the land. Of course, most farmers will not put all their land under solar and they will continue to produce food. But it is important to give our farmers the choice to have this option on their land. The benefit of this diversified income will come back to the community. Most of these farmers live in the community and will spend the income in the community. So it's beneficial for all of us. Solar electricity is cheaper to produce than electricity from natural gas and around half the cost of electricity from coal. Plus, the price of natural gas fluctuates on the market, bringing an uncertainty to the market. The presence of utility solar projects will make the power grid more reliable for locals helping everybody. A number of Delaware County farmers could supply electricity to two energy grids, the Mid-Continent Interconnection System, the MISO, as well as part of PJM Interconnection System. This is quite an opportunity as they can sell to the highest bidder. This position reflects Muncie's earlier status as a manufacturing hub, the loss of which has led to the decline of fortunes, accepting solar projects would allow the county to capitalize on this history once again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rebecca Wright?
Hello, I'm Rebecca Wright, eight oh three West Ashland Avenue. I am a Ball State student. I've lived here for the last four years. I was raised in Indianapolis, though. My, I'm in a unique position to understand solar panels, seeing as my family business, my dad started when I was nine. So my entire childhood has been about technology recycling and the ability to process end-of-life technology. He does process solar panels currently. He processes them into concrete. But having been from Indianapolis, I have seen a, what concerns me is that I've seen more and more agricultural areas be caught up in residential creep. And I know for a fact that solar panels are a safe way to preserve the land, to continue to use it for agricultural means later. I know Purdue is currently working on solar panels that are opaque, that you could plant crops underneath and be able to do both. I'm just deeply concerned that we have a lot of landowners who are not able to profit off of their land and I fear that they're going to turn towards residential contracts and we're going to see a degradation of our agricultural area in Delaware County. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Berry?
Morning, my name is Dan Berry. I live at twenty-nine oh one East County Road eight hundred north and east. I believe that the solar here in Delaware County could be a good way for landowners to diversify their income and also make renewable electricity for the community and the state. Electric demand is going up and I believe that Delaware County has an opportunity. No more solar ordinance in place. It's time for the solar developers to start progress. I know that this ordinance pertains to private property rights. Any landowner goes by these rules and regulations should have the right to put solar on their property. So I'm asking that when the moratorium ends, we go back to the original ordinance that's on the books right now. And I think we can all live from that. And I know Delaware County is concerned about losing farm ground. So I don't understand why they don't want solar on farm ground because that land will come back to the farm and they're pushing for more subdivisions or urban sprawl. I think that if you're gonna rule out solar, then they should rule out any more permits on farm ground or residential areas. Because that's the biggest loss of farm ground is residential urban sprawl. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Cheryl Swingly?
Good morning, Cheryl Swingly. I'm glad that Commissioner Brand clarified earlier statements that he made at the first last meeting. The solar ordinance document that was handed to commissioners at the last meeting was unofficial. It was not requested or supported by any Delaware County government body. When the document was introduced, it sounded official, but in truth, the report came from a deceptively named group to make it sound official. The document represents the work of people who are against utility solar. When the document was held up, it was described as including a few changes to Delaware County's utility solar ordinance. As I was able to secure a copy of the document, it has by no means includes just a few changes. The county solar ordinance is ten pages. The document presented is seventeen pages. It has more than fifty new paragraphs of guidelines and restrictions, as well as changes on almost every number in the ordinance. In addition, there is a brand new five-page section dealing with commercial battery storage systems. The unrealistic document captures the dreams and wishes of people who are against utility solar. This document would make it literally impossible for a solar company to build anything in Delaware County. That said, it's time to put the solar ordinance to bed. That means no more changes. Delaware County has a solar ordinance that has been put through the meat grinder. The people against the ordinance and for the ordinance have had their say for nearly three years. Neither side has gotten everything it wants. We had a government-appointed group called the Solar Study Group work on an ordinance for a year and a half. And this was an official group. The Solar Study Group was made up of three people against utility solar, three people who were neutral and three people who were for utility solar. This committee that advised government officials as to what kind of solar ordinance would work in Delaware County, would work best for Delaware County residents. The study group's recommended ordinance was then amended. After the first round of amendments, there was a second round of amendments with the help of a paid consultant. The revised solar ordinance was then recommended months ago by the zoning board and passed by the county commissioners. We have a solar ordinance after more than four years of starting and stopping. After a great deal of turmoil, we have an ordinance that utility solar companies are ready to live by. And I would mention, they've redone their maps about three times in this process, which is kind of expensive to do. But their construction is prevented by the latest moratorium. So I encourage you to keep the moratorium that we have, not to start revising it just because we have a new commissioner. And I will add that from Linda, Linda's comments, that adding recommendations from a company, national grid, does not change the irregular process that we've kind of witnessed in the last few months. Both groups have biases and should not be allowed to amend. The ordinance bypassing public participation, constituents deserve better.
Sure, three minutes.
So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going down to commissioner comments. I would like to propose a executive meeting among the commissioners. What does your calendars look like next Monday?
After ten o'clock, I'm good.
After ten? I believe that's the case. Yep, you did. So I would like to, John, can you advertise an executive session for next Monday at ten AM? In the commissioners' conference room and I would like to discuss personnel issues. Would Edit classify as economic development, John?
No.
Can we discuss added in that?
If you discuss personnel issues, you can only discuss personnel issues.
One subject at a time.
We can't discuss economic development also?
You can discuss an economic development project.
Okay, let's do that. Let's do personal issues and economic development then. Everybody clear? Next Monday, ten, ten AM. Very handled the twenty twenty-five Commissioners Department head assignments. I just want to say real quick and then I'll let you guys go. Cheryl and I attended the Isaiah House groundbreaking last Friday. Very well attended. Everyone's very excited for that. They are asking, asking for an extension for substantial completion. They did have some issues with permitting. So I would like to make sure we grant a request. I guess that was part of their agreement, from what I understand. And I think, John, your office can provide a addendum to that agreement?
Yes, that was part of the redevelopment commission's economic development agreement.
Okay, I want to make sure that's taken care of for them. So let's, let's do it.
Add on the agenda.
Let's do what we have to do in the redevelopment commission meeting for them. So anyway, we're glad the Isaiah House is, is, is going. It's, it's all laid out and it's going to be a great thing.
Still needing donations.
Still needing donations, yep. And any volunteers that would like to help build. Albany, we got a, we got a notice from NDOT last week. Company's changing some speed limits up in the area of twenty-eight and sixty-seven just west of Albany, up there around the new Taco Bell area. So anybody that drives that area, be prepared to slow down in that area. We do have that documented if anyone would like to take a look at it. But I think that's all I have at this point.
John, do we have any Facebook messages, questions?
I have a lot of comments about.
That's.
The audio feeds better or?
Some problems with the video and I noticed when I was looking at it, it was rebuffering. I guess that's in the internet. The audio was challenging.
Mr. Brand, you have any?
Yeah, a couple of things. At the last meeting, we discussed claims being paid in timely manner and that last meeting was timed. That day was kind of nasty in the morning on January sixth. And I brought up, you know, do we have an ordinance that allows the auditor's office to execute and pay claims without official action? And there actually is. It's ordinance two thousand five dash zero zero one dash A. Allows the auditor's office to pay a number of things, utilities and things like that without official commissioner action. I also talked about Employee of the Month program. That's been rolled out. Appreciate the help from Kyle Johnson and Sarah on that. We have some nominees and we have selected our first Employee of the Month. That will be announced in the next meeting and they'll be recognized here in the, here in the public meeting and they'll have a privileged parking spot as a result. I would like to get on the next agenda, the thirty-two and a half hours that I brought up during the January sixth meeting, as well as I want people to know I'm doing a, an asset inventory on vehicles and how that relates to their use after hours, take home vehicles, things like that. So we'll be discussing that in the next meeting as well. That's all I have.
All right, I entertain a motion recess?
You guys start putting your public comment, like there's, I wasn't here before you guys took it up. You took it up at nine o'clock, so there was no way for me to sign up.
Well, it comes up at nine o'clock, so if you hear this.
You're here after 9:00.
If you just get here a little before 9:00, you'd be able to sign up.
Shouldn't you meet the public where they are?
If you want to come up afterwards and discuss anything, you can.
On the record.
Sign up next meeting.
That's ridiculous.
I've taken a motion for adjournment.
Any of you guys can change that.
Do I have a second?
I would ask you, Brand, to change that. That's ridiculous.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Brand.
Yes.
Mr. Regan.
Yeah.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Run recess.